Yeah, we're gonna start the meeting in about six thirty.
Ken's was about five hundred bucks for it.
Crosshand for the pledge, don't get it wrong. There he is.
Oh.
Sorry, I went to three places, I figured it out.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are we sitting here?
Oh, he's a red employer.
I know.
You, you're the guy.
Well, I thought community center was the...I'm crap, right in my brain, that's what I thought.
Oh, I didn't think you said that.
When we have big crowds, go there to be seen.
Well, that's what I was like, oh, that must be where it is, so I go in, I'm like, oh, he's here.
Okay, call the meeting at six thirty, three P M. So, Dunbar, I'm gonna go ahead with roll call. Tomaher, here. Ken Dunbar, here. Bart Dunbar, here. John Lott, here. Ken Riley, here. John Ferris, here. Steve Weaver, here. Kurt Martyr, absent. Bart Dunsmore, absent. Okay, I make the motion to excuse the absences of Kurt Martyr and Bart Dunsmore.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. And opposed? And motion carry. Okay, we're gonna take a couple minutes to look at February's agenda, see if there's any changes we can make, or any corrections.
I forgot my glasses.
Here, one on bar, please. Oh, let's see his doc now.
I'll make the motions, like we adopt, we adopt, for the group.
Okay, can we get a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? All right, motion carries for the document agenda, second by Mr. Library. All right, meeting minutes from February. I love this paper.
A little bit different than what DG sells. I read up there, my dollars, like I bought a paper like that, but not good. I don't know what's like tissue paper, basically.
This is, this is high quality stuff.
This is, this is out here.
I felt very lame when I bought my paper. I was like, this is peak adult, I'm spending money on premium paper.
Yeah.
It's nice.
I like, I like your comments by commissioners, it should not be added to be added to...
What?
On your draft for con, for last month's.
Mm-hmm.
Under comments by commissioners, right underneath Secretary Dunbar, says it should not be added to be added to the agenda.
Oh, nice. Not be added to the...
Maybe make a correction on that, and I'll sign your copy, and we can get that official if you want. Besides, I don't see anything else, any other comments on that? Besides that title, it's always here for last, last month's meeting minutes.
Anyone else?
Anyone else? Anything that's good? I'll make a motion to accept the per 14th minutes, second. As, once, we get the correction read down there on the draft. And you said you seconded it, John, just, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carry. You don't have any citizens today?
I thought we were gonna have some.
Yeah, I saw community center, I'm like, oh.
Yeah, we're gonna have a big crowd.
I actually had a few citizens that were gonna show up, I think they might not know that it's over here. Because there were a few people they wanted to bring to the table.
Uh, regards to?
So, um, so, actually, uh, a few people locally, that's, uh, they want them to, uh, change the ordinance or modify so that people within the city limits are allowed to have chickens.
I saw that on the, I saw that on the, I don't need it at all.
I thought it says you can, but you could, can't have roosters.
You cannot have, you cannot have chickens or, uh, can't have chickens.
We have, can we pull that up, do they know where it is?
We need to pull it up.
Yeah. Because I wanna say, somebody read it to me, this is when I first moved here, years ago, not that many years ago, and they said, you can have a, it says a reasonable amount of chickens, but no roosters.
If my recollection is says, it says no fowls. Yeah, it says no, yeah, it says no, not waterfall, but it says, uh, no poultry.
Oh, no poultry.
Yeah, no poultry, no livestock, within the city limits.
Gotcha.
Yeah, because when I moved here, I was, I was looking at egg chickens.
Yeah.
And I already talked to the city hall, and said I wasn't gonna give any chickens, it's definitely not in the city.
Before violation, what is it?
I have two neighbors, including roosters, but I think they're hysterical, I love them, one of them, they just left their home.
As long as nobody's complaining about it. Right, right, I see the problem.
Is that a, is that a planning commission, a budget?
Is that a planner, or is that a city council?
No, we would need to, as planning commission, I think we would need to reduce the ordinance and agree to any change.
I thought you'd have to just section seven.
I never, I never did, I don't remember off the top of my head.
I, I've been told for years that chickens are not allowed, I remember that, even though it doesn't, I remember the neighbors complaining.
They would do something, maybe a... It says like no litter, there's a bunch of, there's a bunch of, yeah, yeah.
Oh, no, we can't litter.
I know, it was like one dog, we can't, no poultry.
I drive a bit of chickens, and then those big dogs that are cat.
Ken, Ken Dunbar?
Yep.
Why don't we set, um, for the regards to that ordinance, why don't we set that, uh, put that on the agenda for next month?
Okay.
Uh, for discussion and review and a vote? And we're discussion and review, and then, uh...
I saw that on Facebook, did somebody come into the city and ask?
Yeah, I've, I've been around, and actually, somebody in the city talked to me about it, and then somebody hit me up on Facebook about it, I said, well, I said, I'm planning.
On Facebook, she was asking, you know.
And I said, I said, I'm planning commission, you need to come in, and, because she wanted to picket and, uh, sign petitions and all that, and I said, oh, let's vote this round.
Just, yeah, just put it, yeah. Hold on a second, next, put it on for next month's agenda, to discuss that ordinance, and then we can, uh, look at it in further detail.
I'll try and get, gather some of the copies of the ordinances from the surrounding communities that have it also, because I think Richmond has an ordinance that they rule out with, and, uh...
Yeah, I think it's, it's mostly, you can have hens, but you cannot have rooster eggs.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
It just feels as a good boilerplate to look at.
Right.
For what we wanna do, right? And then, I, I think there needs to be some language in there about lot size and the number of chickens, too, we don't want somebody having a standard city lot, owning a hundred chickens, right?
Right, absolutely, we gotta, right.
It's like, you have a standard city lot, you can have forty feet chickens, if you got half acre, or you can have ten, because I know, I know minimum acreage for, for livestock is five acres for one.
Yeah.
And then it's a two, and then it's two and a half acres per additional animal, right?
Well, you know, and, and if they're, if you're on a little city lot, you can't have six or eight chickens.
No, right, and, right, that's why I say we gotta put...
This way we can review the ordinance, and then, um...
Maybe a lot of free range?
Well, that's the thing, too, is that there's gotta be language about how they're contained.
It is in our code of ordinances that we currently, that they are not allowed within the city limits, but that's something I think that we can touch upon next month, because it's a chance for us to pull up, pull up the ordinance, and, uh, read it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
So, that sounds pretty good, but they just buy out the ordinance.
Absolutely, I mean, I don't have a problem with that.
If we all decide we don't like the ordinance, or allow people to have chicken, we have a big barbecue.
That's the advantage about aviling chickens, after three years, they can reduce production, and they turn into, well...
Dinner.
Dinner. I haven't, I don't have a problem with that.
I would.
I have a problem with that, so.
Oh, I do.
Okay. Moving on.
All right.
Uh, communications, well, I think we just discussed all that, is there anything else that we need?
I would not, that was under citizen comments.
Yeah, that was under citizens' comments. By citizen, Mr. Tarr. Well, communications, uh... Did everybody get the, uh, packet here of condominium act?
I did.
Has anybody had a chance to review it?
I, I read part of it, I didn't get through, I don't, I didn't know if there was more comments after the first couple, I, I think it was just referencing, I didn't read how many it had.
It, it basically just was step by step on how I came to my conclusions.
Yeah, that's how I got out of it.
And, um, there, in, in reviewing into how I came to my conclusions, I did notice further issues with the setbacks, um, I did list those in there. That being said, I was looking over their most recent drawings, and even their original submission of drawings, and it's tiny, and you won't be able to see it, but on the right-hand side, under site criteria, lot summary, building setbacks, front twenty-five...
Yep.
Front twenty-five, rear thirty, side ten, among twenty, total. So, they acknowledge our setbacks, um, both of their site plans.
So, they made adjustments to the drawings, is what you're, is what you're saying?
I see no adjustments.
Okay, but they did, uh...
They did acknowledge.
They acknowledged it on the cover sheet.
They acknowledged both, on both versions of the drawings are setbacks.
Okay.
So, what's the remedy?
The remedy would be they get, uh, variance, or, yeah, I think that they would have to get variance.
Does the city engineer, I'm assuming the city engineer works with these builders, on these plans, and the city engineer, I think, will know what these setbacks are.
That being, Bart? Was there a city engineer at Burke, is that, uh...
No, we just, we just met with the city engineer and...
Not the D P G, yeah.
And condo engineer.
Yeah.
Those plans were resolved at that meeting to correct a few things, so that's the updated plan, so yes, they, they will still...
They know what, I mean, they know what...
I, I mean, I don't wanna, I don't like assuming that other people had, um, were correct in their review of it, not that I'm saying my review is correct, but I've, I think we should be sitting down with these people, asking them, um, specifically, if they were looking at these, if they intentionally left it different, if there was something we're unaware of that would cause it to be different, but I don't think just assuming they, you know, have a correct understanding, but it's, it's fair to everyone.
So, what are we out of your business now, to review the drawings?
I, I think...
Yeah, we got the, we got the communications from the...
Well, for my three months from now, dealing with this issue, uh, there's only one, I tried to give you guys the whole presentation before, only one issue that, that to me is worthy of my attention right now, and I'm going to ask council over the next meeting to send a request to a planning commission, because that's the way it goes, to, to review the peak height ordinance, and move it from twenty-five feet to thirty feet, so we should get that back at our next meeting.
Okay.
Because that needs to be changed in kind of ordinance, unless the city does not want to entertain that thought, and we're gonna expect them to alter all their plans, I showed you the, the curb appeal and all that stuff, you know, that purpose is to raise the peak height from twenty-five feet to thirty feet, that's in the kind of ordinance now, and that will apply only to the condominium ordinance. So, I'm gonna ask council to do that, and I'm also gonna give this to council, because I'm, I'm having more offer on this stuff, so I tapped out, so this is what I'm going to give to the council next week, so they can review all the discussions, and what we've done, and I'll put it in their court. Because obviously, we did not come to any kind of consensus on this, we spent almost maybe four months on it, so what you see here is what I'm gonna do to council next week, we're gonna consider it, and I'm also asking to send over specifically to raise, the, the planning engineer to consider raising the peak heights to twenty-five, both twenty-five to thirty feet, and that needs to be proactive, don't, so that these builders know what we're telling them, oh, we're not gonna do it, we gotta make an adjustment, it doesn't deal with all the builder ancillary issues that have been brought up, but I will make them aware of what we've been discussing, and I'm gonna take my lead from the council, and we'll let it go over there, so I'm, I'm pulling this off, and it's something I don't have any worry about, too. You don't have to read all that, this, this is just a courtesy, so you see, I'm giving it to the council, you know, I have to give the full transparency.
And this is where we can vote on variance, actually, just that it's, we can vote on variance on this, and then changing it to thirty feet.
Well, we haven't got it yet, but the council, council has to send stuff to us to review.
Okay.
Then we vote on it, then we send our findings to council, and then they vote on it.
Okay.
And they can either agree, disagree, or have, uh, or amend it, that's the way it works, anything, we change the ordinances, or, uh, lot splits, condos, all that kinda stuff, generally, it is, they are going to request us to review the issue, we can do that here, which we've been reviewing this for three months, it's high time to move on, to be here to actually concretely say what we wanna do, to send it back to city, and let them make a decision on it, because we do not have the authority to say we wanna meet with these people, and those people, or anything else, we need, but let them know what the issue is, that's my ability, this, this encapsulates what we've gone through, using Ken's information that he's provided to us, and also my responses to that, and any other information I've gleaned out of it, so...
Um, I, I, can you restate, you said, we don't have the authority to ask to meet with people, is that what you said?
Well, not, not to, not to resolve the issue, no.
I, I don't know that I agree with that assessment, the, our, our purpose is to review the...
Yeah, but we can't make the decision, and we send, we send our review, we can say, you know, yea, nay, or whatever, but we don't have the authority to change it.
We don't have the authority to...
We just send our findings to the city council, and they can agree, disagree, or modify it.
I'm sorry, was this in regards to the proposed ordinance changes, or the...
Specifically for the height, peak one, that's all I'm saying right now, I'm gonna ask him to...
Twenty-five to thirty feet, yeah.
And I've also given them all the information that I have available to me from these last three, four months of discussing this, so that maybe somebody there will say, okay, well, this, we should do this, and then they will specifically tell us what to review, and then we can put it in writing, and put it to them, and then they can, uh, vote on it.
Are we supplying them with this as well, the most recent, um...
Include it if you want.
I just, I, I see, you know, we're going off of the last meeting's informational stuff, and...
Well, it's a combination two or three, you have it, kind of. And you have one last, you know, this, regardless, I put all, like, you know, like I say, I, I'm out of, I'm out of, I'm exhausted, from putting any more information, and I, I'm not trying to write a novel with a story.
Right.
You can include that, I, I have motion that off.
Yeah, I just, I think that's a...
And if you would, uh, maybe you wanna drop that off to, um, Donovan, and ask him to attach it, really can we get that, it's smart.
It's, it's just, it's very thorough, and I would hate to, and, like I said, maybe I came to...
More information, I just wanna move along, I wanna get to, I wanna resolve this.
Um, that would...
Their direction goes, I, I'm not pulling for one thing or another, the only thing I'm pulling for right now is these builders got a, we're gonna be starting to build soon, and we can't at the last minute say, well, we need, no, you can't, you can't have a thirty foot height, and throw, turn the whole thing to a stop, so that's what my concern with that right now, and that's why I'm gonna specifically ask them to send that issue back here, and then we can discuss it, we can vote on it, and send it back to them, as far as, this stuff, oh, this gives them a heads up.
Yeah.
And they start thinking about it, plugging the depths of it, talk to the engineers, talk to the builders, whatever they wanna do, I don't think I can do anymore from this part until I get to rest in front of full council, they need to consider this, see this initiative right now.
Okay, that being said, I saw that they have buildings, you know, their building schedule, I don't remember which page it is on here, um, they do realize the plan's not gonna improve, right?
It's just a contempt, it's just a conceptual plan.
Because we have...
The final, final review is in the future.
Mm-hmm.
So, this is not the hardcore, we've discussed this many times before, too, this is, this is not etched in stone.
This is just my...
When it comes out, when we do the final review plan, that is, that is when everybody signs off on it, well, not there yet.
I just don't know why we wouldn't be giving them adequate heads up, but hey, this is gonna need to be changed, we can...
That's what I'm doing, okay?
Yeah.
I'm giving, I'm giving the council heads up, we need, we need to consider this issue, twenty-five to thirty feet, that's number one, that's, that's, that's something plainly I can see needs to be dealt with, whether we do it or not, it's another thing, we'll, we'll talk about it, and vote on it, then the council will say yes or no, or a mess, those other issues, give them all the information, and let them decide whether these are issues that need to be further plugged and further, uh, discussed and resolved, I, I don't have any interest in it anymore, I said, I'm not, I'm exhausted, we're trying to figure out, I don't mean physically exhausted, but I mean, I, I've gone very at me that I can, I've read all the things that I can, I've read all the state law that I can, I've heard the condominium ordinance, I've, I've read the something, I've done all that, I cannot come up with any more information given, so it's time to pass it off, and let them take the lead, and we give them our, our, uh, our opinion on it, but they ask us to give the opinion on it, that's just the way it works.
So, why can't we vote on this to move this forward, do we need to wait until the next meeting?
We have to get a request, we have to get a request from the council to consider something, like, and there are some hardcore things that we must get, you know, a, a request from the council, like I said, lot splits, condos, change in ordinances, just say, well, we're gonna send a plan, and we're gonna get their take on it, and that's when we do what we've been doing here with this, but, I mean, it would've, probably would've better do this a little sooner.
Right.
But I thought we're gonna get hashed out, but we're not hashed out, we just keep getting deeper and deeper.
Right.
And getting more and more added to it, and I, I think, I think we're chasing our tails, to be quite frank.
So, we have something from the council next, for the next...
Yeah, I know, the, the next, uh, council meeting's April second, and I'm gonna give them that same hack that I gave you there, and wants to add on, uh...
What question happen in advance when we get our packets delivered, and the information?
It'll be on the, it'll be on the agenda.
If you do our homework meeting, and we can show up, you're ready to make some decision about it, so we don't prolong this, team, team drag out a little bit.
They, uh, that, that being said, we scheduled the preliminary review meeting earlier with city hall for May tenth, because they submitted this most recent, this most recent drawing last week, and it says, our, our preliminary, uh, site plan review says we have approximately sixty days to review it, and give them an order, uh, give them an answer, um, we're supposed to notify neighbors of the adjoining properties that means...
Well, we should be really tired of that, won't we?
Yeah, but that being said, the preliminary review's not intended for council, it is intended for the planning commission, and, well, our job, I think, is to enforce our ordinances as written, and if we're not, if we're not looking at our ordinance as, as they're written, I don't know, I, I genuinely don't know what we're doing.
I don't have an answer for you, Ken, I, I really don't understand where you're going with this, to be quite frank, you know, that's why I wanna have some lawyer input, I don't know.
Yeah.
You know, I, I'm not the all-knowing, all-seeing, leave, I'm not, so I need some, I need some additional input here to get this straightened out, the thing I do know is I wanna, uh, bring into our attention to the height ordinance, that's the only thing that I'm concerned with right now, and in the meanwhile, I'm gonna give them all this information so they can consider it, so as we go along this process, everybody's seeing the same thing, and everybody can come at it from their own particular view, discussions take place, and a resolution is met.
If we are questioning which ordinances are pertaining to this, why don't we have the lawyer to look over our ordinances, he could look over my packet, he could disagree with it.
Well, again, the council can, can make some of those decisions, if you want, you know, there's nothing spot for you either, Ken, if we're coming to a council meeting and expressing your concerns, too, instead of going secondhand, I mean, you, you can bring those up at the council, but I, I'm a little, I'm a little hesitant every time we get a little wiggle here, now we gotta bring the lawyers, and we spend a bunch of money, I don't think it's really necessary, this is, I don't think it's as complicated as we're really making it out to be.
I think it's more complicated than we're making it out to be, but I...
It appears that way, but I'm ready to do this, you have your own opinion, that's all, that's, that's all right.
And I think when a general consensus cannot be reached by us, that we need to find someone who can give us a valid opinion.
Well, we're not there yet, we have not seen if we can come to a general consensus yet, ever, so, I mean, just to automatically drag the lawyer, that costs a lot of money to do that, you know, these guys have been building million-dollar proj, multimillion-dollar projects for years and years and years and years, for instance, you know, we just, we, we just adopted the rental ordinance last month, and that's where I, well, maybe we should, uh, throw the lawyer, and I said, no, I don't think we need to, I mean, we're going off the language as, we're not making these, creating these things out of whole cloth every time, people who are already gone, over a lot of this, these things, uh, are quite well-known, as people have developed over the years, unless there's actually glaring thing that nobody can reach an agreement on, fine, let the lawyer, like the language that I was doing about the C one and the R one A, we went around and around and around on that, send it to the lawyer, if he pays what he wants to do, he says, yeah, that's fine, so I'm, I'm very hesitant to do that, if there's a real, I, I'm not hesitant if I think there's a question about it, but, I say, I'm on it, I just, I don't really, I, I need some other direction from, uh, the council, this is the way we can bring them in on it, and see what, see what their feelings are on it. Well, we're gonna get, we're gonna get a request to review twenty-five to thirty feet next month, I'm gonna tell you that right now, whatever else happens from there, I, I don't know, but I'm, I'm giving them that, and I'm hoping something will, will, uh, will take place, will break this lock jam.
I think some of the stuff's going through, we just need to get it, review it, and move on.
And what I...
I want them to review it, and know what we've been up to.
Yeah.
Because I don't want any last-minute surprises, you know, things are picking up as far as the construction schedule goes, the same thing with the sidewalks, so sometimes we just, we just can't keep booting this stuff down the road, month after month, and month, where they got construction schedules in the summertime, they got crews, they got builders, we're trying to get this project complete, so at the best of our ability, we have to work with them to make that happen.
Right.
And if there is, if there are real issues, then we'll find out, and we'll, we'll, we'll take care of it, right now, I'm, I'm, I'm at a loss to figure out where they are, or, and I'm not really all that concerned if there is, that figure, I should tell you the truth.
That, that to me feels like taking it down the road, rather than us spending some time now going, you know what this is?
How much more time you wanna spend with that, I mean, I can't, I can't do anymore than I've done now, obviously, we're in disagreement, so what do you suggest, we sit here and just keep talking about it all day?
I, I suggest we give it to the lawyer, and I know that generates a...
What are you gonna give to the lawyer?
I mean, we can, we can give him...
Why don't you write it up, here, here's, and I'm being quite, quite honest with you, and I'm not really laying in your position at all, you write up, because you're the one who has the concerns, you write up a bullet point, what you wanna give to lawyer, bring it to the council meeting.
Ken, we, we could just give them the packet already, or, right?
Or the, so, do you want them to return it, what the problem is, why don't you give them some correction on what you think the issues are?
I, I thought that was a very thorough pointing out of what the issues are, they're, they don't be...
So, you mean with the packet that you just wrote up?
Mm-hmm.
Fine, then include that, you would tell, there, there's concerns with that, put a little cover page on that, say, these are the points I think a lawyer should address, I'd like their opinion on it.
Yeah.
Can we send it to the lawyer, if you wanna do that, that's fine, we'll be too.
I just don't know why...
Let's move on, we're, we're not gonna get anything done today talking about it anymore, obviously.
Was, I mean, did, did everyone read this thoroughly, does anyone have any thoughts on it? I, I, I don't mean to see it a lot.
I did it quite thoroughly, all your concerns before, so I cannot go over it again, I cannot keep reading it, I cannot keep researching the law, I don't... I didn't do it quite thoroughly, all your concerns before, so I cannot go over it again. I cannot keep reading it. I cannot keep researching the law. I don't have any concerns, Ken. That's what I'm saying, is I'm, I'm, I've exhausted the topic according to my abilities. So obviously, I'm not the one to make another call on this. Just from my layman point of view, you know, Steve, we've got ours. I've done the best I can to try to look at what, what's going on here in the decisions you've raised. And, you know, I gave you guys a twenty-minute presentation on each one of those four points that you put out there, so I can't do it again.
I mean, I.
It's not, it's not gonna bring you to a different result or a different conclusion. You can't put me in a wrong mood until I find a quarter. I, I can't do it anymore.
I do, I mean.
But what's your, I know you, you're worried about the, the setback, cause you believe that it falls under a different part of the ordinance than what they're using.
They only gotta have a ten-foot setback.
And you, you think they should have a thirty?
I mean, I, I explained it in the first.
I got, I got a good part of that, and that's, so that's, that's the, that's the only question here is, you believe it based upon the information, it should be thirty feet? And if you read through it, there's, you could come to the conclusion that it can be less than that, so.
I, I disagree you can come to the conclusion that it could be less than that. The, the rule cited is for mobile homes. It's.
It's not mobile homes.
It, it, it is for mobile homes.
Well, the condo ordinance is the one that requires a minimum of ten foot.
The R one twenty-five nine four, nine nineteen forty-four?
I don't know, I don't remember.
Cause that's, that's from the.
I, I have, I've got the information listed in the result.
The, yeah, there's no mention of setbacks in the condominium act, but there is fifty-five nine point two four one. A condominium project shall comply with applicable local laws, ordinance, and regulations. So that's the one I found, and our law regulation is thirty feet. Then we found, uh, rule R four, uh, nine four four one, homes, permanent buildings and facilities and other structures shall not be located closer than ten feet from the property boundary line of the community or home condominium, and shall not be required by local ordinance unless otherwise approved by the commission to be more than ten feet from the property boundary line. That was what was cited. This is from, and you cited what it's, it's from, but if you look at the definitions from that rule set, commission means the manufactured housing commission. Community means a mobile har, mobile home park and a seasonal mobile home park. Home has the same meaning as manufactured home with the same meaning as mobile. And this, there's a excerpt from Lara on the website, the commission means quarterly and has the legal authority to approve local governmental ordinances which would regulate manufactured housing, grant variances to the mobile home commission's rules, approve license for mobile home realtors, and impose penalties on persons who have violated the mobile home commission act or rules. I mean, I, that to me is pretty clear that we're not.
Get it, it might be helpful if you bullet point that before they just, you know, you hand them that back, that you're, you know, I trust you will. Break that down, bullet point exactly what your concerns are, so then when they go over that, they can, they can maybe have a little bit better idea of what you're talking about. And then we'll see what they want, or they will take the action and, and move forward with it.
What action would they take?
What?
Are you saying they'll change the ordinance? I'm, I'm just, what action?
I'm not saying anything. I'm just saying, they need to have the information there. They need to be aware of your concerns. They need to review the information that I provided for them. And if you bullet point specifically where you think they are in a, they are, uh, in error. Simple, you know, simple statements. This is one, two, three, four. If you look in my following package, these are the things I think you need to consider, cause I think we're doing things illegally according to codes. Sign briefly and then let them look at it.
That would be a good idea. If you could, if they send it to the council, they could indicate that it's a communication from you and discuss it at the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, with your bullet points highlighted, what you did here with the, with the outline.
And you're worried about these ones?
Well, I'm, I'm actually far from really worried about the setback on every side of the building, not just over here.
And then, again, highlight that, make them aware of it, and let them look at it. We need to get their, their input on it, and they need to be aware of it. If it is a concern for you, then apply all means, bring them into the loop, and let them know what your concerns are.
Yeah. I guess get on the code of enforcement officer, are we gonna use stats on that, or?
Uh, I was hoping you would show up. I did invite him, he was supposed to be here, but he may have gotten lost in town too. We were gonna ask about what you were doing, maybe about Jake Williams' assistant, obviously.
Oh, okay, yeah.
But he, he was young, so I don't know if he had.
What's his name again? I don't even mention it, but.
I know, but I.
What's the code for?
Oh, I might.
I'm sorry, we're, I mean.
Who, who is it? The John Urbana? Tom Urbana?
Okay.
I know you said it before, and I was gonna.
U R B A N. Yep, U R B A N, Tom Urbana.
And he does it for, also, and he's, he's got a lot there. He was a commissar too, or something. He's got a good background. But yeah, I thought it'd be good, uh, just to be a little.
Yeah.
Be back to him.
We could've talked to him about the flags.
Flags and?
Yeah, I've been asking about that too.
Chicken's flag.
The council thought that I should invite the council meeting, but I said, well, it wouldn't hurt for us to be on the same page too.
Yeah.
Cause I'm really all about everybody getting the same information all the time, so we can make enough decisions. We have, I don't want to be working a little self inside of us.
Right, correct.
The, uh, an open playing field here, so we can.
Well, maybe tell them next month.
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask them here.
Do we just wanna put that on the agenda again, or?
Sure.
You know, let's put it on, let's invite them next time and say, you know, this is, you know, for the time and place. Like I said, I didn't know where the community center was until this, until go to Mr. Riley, and he goes, oh, no, that's, it's the light area. He may not know where.
Probably not.
That's what I'm saying. I just happen to be driving down to the office, like, oh, wait, there's a phenomenon, I said, come on, over here.
Yeah, I just wanted to see how he's doing.
Yeah, that'd be great, I'd like to find out about that also. Well, no, unfinished business review, we've got this code of ordinances, and I think that's with regards to the flag.
Of this, yep.
And did you find anything else out on it with your research?
Uh, I did not look into the matter as, I thought if we were going to form some sort of subcommittee, we should figure out exactly how to do that. I wasn't sure if it was just, we talked about Farv and I doing it, and I didn't wanna just meet with Farv and do something improper in terms of procedure wise.
Do you wanna involve the ordinance officer with that and contact him and?
I mean, we could definitely run past him. I don't know that we need to involve him without any language being written.
Well, I, I would think that he would be able to give us some.
Pointers.
Idea on whether, uh, those are a violation of code, by the, sure not, a ordinance violation, sure not, I don't know. And that's, that was the question I was gonna, wanted to present to him tonight, um, but.
I guess what we've been on top was, uh, with his invitation for next month's meeting.
Right.
So we can get a little bit more different today.
We just table that until next month?
Just table it until next month, so we have a coordinate officer. I mean, it would be great input from him, is what I see.
When I went to City Hall, when I went to City Hall, I talked to Amber, and she said that one of the planning commission members had come and got, and got this Mr. Urbana's phone number.
I got it, and then I, my work schedule changed. I do have it, I have his number, I'm trying to.
And then she said, I think, I think that somebody else.
I stopped by, I asked Donna that day and, and got his number. That's all I know, it was talking, you know, I, I just wanted him sticking out. But, uh, there were some changes in regards to workforce at my office, and my workload is doubled. So, yeah. I do a lot of miles and a lot of hours, you know, cover a lot of counts. Uh, all right, so yeah, let's table that, let's move that out until next month. And then one fifty through one oh five through one twenty-six of the code of ordinance, what is that in regards to?
Yep.
My book here.
Yep.
Is that also, is that in regards to the signs also?
No, that's in regards to the, the novel.
The novel, okay. All right, so we're, we're working on this, and I said we're going back to city council on that with, uh, your information here. And in regards to raising it to allow thirty-foot height of the condo buildings for the con only, the projects under the condo ordinance.
How long would we do it, three months, or?
Yeah, it does that, yeah.
So I really don't know. Ken, you put it on there, what do you want to do?
I'm sorry?
You put that on there, right? With your one oh five, your one twenty-six, or what do you want to do?
Do we, do we wanna go through this page by page? Cause I've got, I've got to say.
No, if you wanna, uh, with your bullet points that you wanna bring up to city council and the lawyer, um, that would be good to touch on.
I, I gotta say, it is very frustrating to have spent a ton of time typing this up, and it walks you through it step by step. Every single one of my concerns. It references our code, our code how it's intended to be read. It is, I mean, not to toot my horn, but it is a beautiful document.
Well, I never said it was.
And, and to, to not have it, you know, be read in preparation and then tell me to retype it up as a bullet point?
No, not retype it up. I'm saying, if you want, since we're here, we're reviewing it and touch base.
It's called an executive summary, okay?
Right, right.
Well, sure is, Ken.
The first time it dated to was an executive summary.
If you're giving this to decision makers, this, this is just the way that it works. If you're giving, if you have a, a big body of information. And, and again, I, I don't mean to be, uh, forgive me, I'm not trying to talk down to you at all, but let me just suggest to you that this is the way that it works in business. You got, the people are making decisions, they don't have time to go, and they'll reference that, but an executive summary generally is just like a paragraph. It says what's in there. It says, these are the main things that we need to grab onto. Cause I'm just telling you, that's the way the world works. People are not gonna spend the time going through it word for word and trying to relay all the points you're making there, and going back from this ordinance to that one. You need to boil it down. If you do a good executive summary, bullet point, okay, yeah, that's, I'm gonna go in and I'm gonna drill down on that. You need, you don't need to. I'm, I'm, it's just a suggestion.
I just gen, genuinely, the first document I typed up was a summary. Hey, it's, the buildings are too tall, the setbacks aren't good. And then I was met with a twenty-minute rebuttal, which is fine. I, I, I want us to be discussing it. And then in, in response to that, I was like, okay. The summary wasn't good enough, and I laid out exactly how our code is needing to be followed. And now, then I'm being said, you know, that, it's just not, it's hard to read that, or, or. It's, it's, sorry, that's frustration. That's unfair, but.
All your pages, I'm sorry, I'm moving around. You know, your page is moving through a lot of detail. That's great, there's a lot of detail there, but again, going to an executive summary point. You need to have, okay, this is the problem, and this is the impact of that problem. So what is, you see the twenty-five foot, thirty foot high roof? Okay, so we're only supposed to be twenty-five foot, and what's the problem if we put it at thirty foot? Or are we gonna take out all the overlying birds? And then you need to go the next step and say, possible solution to that. So just very simple, take and say, okay, setbacks aren't correct. We should be thirty foot. We're at ten foot, the problem in the community is this. The solution would be to put it back at thirty foot. Okay, so just, I think that's kind of what Steve did then. And that, that's what I would look for from my point of view.
We are not the legislative body. It's not, it is not our job to make these ordinances. I mean, sure, we have a.
But there's variance. That's a lot. You can do variance, you can go into a variance, and that's why we need to know what's the concern. Okay, it doesn't meet the ordinance. And what is gonna be the impact, and what is the potential solution?
I mean, a, a variance typically is meant to be granted for undue hardship of, okay, I bought this property.
Variance can happen for anything too.
I mean, it can, but you can't.
There's just you grant, you got a variance from a porch.
Yeah.
For that.
Yeah. So that's all, that would just be simple because again, they, you can't go in front of the council and they gotta sit here and read thirty pages to understand where you're going with it.
I.
One, one page at a glance, and then if they want to dig deeper into your stuff here, then it's available.
I don't know, that feels, I get what you're saying of not overloading information, but I, I do feel genuinely that the first, first time is, all right, building's too tall, we should look into that. You know, okay. And, and I don't understand what the problem is of adequately reviewing either.
There's no problem at all, Ken. But if you want it resolved, that's just another way to maybe get to it quicker. It's all, it's all the same, but it's all, point John was making, I mean. You know, people that worked in the field, John does it for a living. You need to just give them the meat of the idea quickly, and they, they will, they will go in and reference deeper in the document once they have an idea of exactly what you're trying to accomplish. Really, what you're saying, what are you, this is the problem, how are we resolved? There's no, there's, there's, there's no criticism about being in detail and producing a lengthy and in-depth document at all.
I just don't understand what, how we can't read this and come to a conclusion of either, you know what, I see how you got to that and I agree, or?
Well, yeah, we see how you got to it. It's not meeting the ordinance. Obviously, you did your homework and you see that something's not meeting the ordinance.
Yeah, I see.
We've gotta determine what was the impact in the community and what's the solution. We can't just keep saying, okay, it doesn't meet, doesn't meet, doesn't meet, doesn't meet. We gotta say, what's the impact and what's the solution?
Okay, so if we're in agreement that it's not meeting our ordinance, which I'm cool with, I would love to have that conversation now, like that, I don't know. I've per, I've presented, hey, it's not meeting ordinance.
What are the impacts that?
The impact would just be, it doesn't, it doesn't meet our code, which.
Which, that, right, but this is also, this is also code that was made in nineteen seventy-eight, that's right, that's also.
This is something that we can change.
Yeah. I have that capability, being the planning commission and city council, we have the ability to change ordinances, add variances. And it doesn't have to be an overall variance, it can be to a specific project in development. You can always make a change.
I mean, if you grant a variance to this one project, it would for sure set precedent for the rest of anyone else trying to build condos.
Give that on from anywhere else.
I mean, I, I just want careful consideration of this, of, hey, you know what, this doesn't meet our ordinance, we'll just give them a variance on anything, either.
Well, if we move the variance, like I said, from twenty-five feet to thirty feet, it's only five feet. It really isn't that much of a difference. I mean, it's just more attic space. I mean, my house that here is, is thirty feet tall, and I mean, it's, and it's.
You're spelling out, and that's what I said, that's where I kind of stopped digging before. You were spelling out each one of these have different violations per se.
Yes.
They're not, you're not just, it's not just one violation for everything. Each one of these condos is meet, it doesn't meet a different criteria.
They, cause they, they're surrogate lots, not real lots, and they have different surrogate lots because of different building profiles. Um, so, you know.
Well, when they presented that, when they presented the original plans to us and showed us a conceptual drawing of what it was gonna look like, I mean, if you were to move into a, an attached condominium and you were in the center, would you not want a window on each side? Okay, and I think that's what they were talking about, is that the center was gonna be higher than the end to allow natural sunlight.
And in the grand scheme of things, whether the building is twenty-five feet or thirty, I don't really care. But our ordinance says it's twenty-five, and we're nothing if we don't follow our code of ordinance.
Well, then, then if city council takes it back to us in regards, uh, for a five-foot variance in regards to the condo ordinance and in regards to the ordinance.
They would have to change residential multiple as whole, but yes, I don't so.
It's like only to the.
It said only to the condo ordinance, not to the home.
I mean, that's quite clear when I did that last presentation, that would apply.
It's strictly fair, that's what I agree, that's what I'm reading on it.
Rest of town stays at twenty-five foot level.
I know how we would regulate it specifically for condos, we'd probably.
Five, it's easy, you write it there.
Yeah, write it for condo, for condos.
I mean, the, the condos are using the height requirement of the residential multiple. I mean, I guess you can, cause it's a, it's per zoning, not per building type. So you would have to rezone. I, I don't think that would be quite as easy, but maybe, maybe I'm mistaken. I believe that would be an entire new zoning classification. Cause it's not, single family homes can be twenty-five feet.
Well, zone for residential multiple, but the ordinance for the condos. So you can have, well, you could have, I mean, instead of them building an attached condo, they could have, instead of making, how many, so they make, are they building? Sixty-something? They could've squashed those plans and made detached condominiums. They did it in Sterling, that's where I used to live. And I had a right to change it. And they basically were like, no, we don't want this, and the city council approved it. And they're detached condominiums, they're not homes. They're detached condominiums that look like a home, and they're all the way around the small lot about the side. and they're all the way around the small lot, about the size of the one that we approved for residential multiple. The same size of this condo association they have.
Actually, they are detached condominiums, ones, the ones they built.
Well, when I'm talking about detached condominiums, it has a garage, and it looks like a house, but it's classified, but it's a one site, it's not attached to another one, attached to another one. These are condominium, buildings, front and back kinda thing, or just front only with driveway in the back from what I saw from the conceptual plans. So those are, in, in my interpretation, as a standard condominium, detached condominium. Detached is literally a small house on a small lot.
Which is, the ones they've developed so far.
Correct, those are considered detached condominiums.
I may remember that, you know.
Okay, that's where I see it, so changing the condominium ordinance from twenty-five feet to thirty feet for the peak, I don't see it as an issue, uh, for those center.
That's the, that's what I'm saying, just the condominium ordinance doesn't regulate its height, the zoning, the zoning district residential multiple does.
You can still grant a variance just.
Still grant, grant a variance to.
Yeah, they did grant a variance to it.
Yeah, grant a variance just for the condominiums as it, as.
And if we're gonna grant that variance, then if we're, I guess, like you said, your point, with all these other smaller, you know, their setback on the sides or between them or the back and front, that's where, like Steve's saying, we give that to city, to the council to decide whether or not they're, they want to enforce or not enforce these, these rules so they can move forward, our own rules, and like you're saying, well, what's the point of having rules if we're not gonna enforce them?
I don't think, I mean, councils enact these rules, they don't get to direct us to not follow them.
I, I should say, to allow for a variance, they're gonna, they're gonna send it back, if I'm understanding the way that this works, right?
They're gonna send it to us to review.
Yes. And then we're gonna make our recommendations, and then they're gonna decide either to grant or not grant the variance.
All we're doing is giving.
He's, he's talking about modifying the.
I'm talking about modifying everything if we're gonna.
Yeah, it's the same, same process.
The same process, whether it's a five foot or whether it's ten feet off the bat, it's, it's the same process.
Sure.
So you're, yeah, again, I think it started, we're getting so far to try to prove the point whether it's right or wrong, and I don't think that that's exactly what either one, either party's trying to do here. We understand that there is, there is concerns that these do not meet our current standards. So if they don't meet our current standards, like I asked originally, what's the resolution? The resolution is, we kick this back up to city council, city council then makes up, gives it to us to recommend what.
Formal request, review, whatever.
We do it, we tell them, okay, well, these are not meeting their ordinances, but we don't see any harm to the public for them not meeting it, or whatever, I don't know what's happening.
Right, some of the, some of the zoning per variance.
Yeah, then they have, and, and it sounds like we would, I don't see, I don't, I'm not an expert either, but I don't see anything of this is fifteen feet instead of twelve feet or whatever, is it?
I mean, the front yard of this property is like three feet.
Less than that.
Because of the right of way, but not.
But that's where the setback's from, the right of way. That's, that, like, that's a pretty big difference to me.
In regards to?
Buildings seven and eight have, with a sixty-foot right of way, which, now, I know, I know we talked about it being sixty-six feet, which I did look, and I couldn't find any specific language that made it all ordinances needed to have sixty-six feet, but I know that MDOT standard is sixty-six feet, that being said.
But this isn't.
Right, if, with our ordinance being sixty feet, the front setback for buildings seven and ten are like six feet. If it's sixty-six feet, they're like three, and, uh.
And this is all gonna be back to sort of like, right?
I believe they're private.
If it's private road, all these two little roads are private.
Yeah.
And then the, then the right of way doesn't.
Right away, there's, there's private.
Our, 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 we define private right of ways as having, or, right, roads having right of ways.
Well, that's what I'm writing, if it's a private road, there can't be a right of way.
It's owned by the condo.
Yeah, we don't.
This is, this is where the HOA kicks in.
Yeah, we don't own it.
Right, you don't.
The city doesn't own it, this is private property.
That's, that's basically the kind of.
We could put a gate here and only let people in that, that own.
Right, the con, this area that's being built is basically an HOA.
I, I totally understand that.
And we, and more or less, the only thing that we're responsible for is, as a city, is the water, the, and the utilities, yeah.
But you're saying that i- in our code, it says for a privately owned road, there's a right of way.
Of sixty feet.
That, that doesn't, I, I don't know.
And I'm, I'm.
I'm not saying you're wrong, I'm just saying that doesn't make any sense.
I, that part confused me as well, but that, I'm saying, this is, we have talked about this endlessly without ever actually talking about this. And I, at least, at least that's how I feel about this, and there's a lot of meat and potatoes to go through here.
But you gotta remember too, that this is a conceptual plan, this is not, I mean, they still have, and they still have moved up to the next plan where they would make adjustments according to order.
This, this hasn't, that they're, they're gonna start building in July, like, they, I think we're moving past it being a conceptual plan.
Once it's proposed.
I, I'm, yeah.
I thought I seen a note that said they weren't issued for construction. It does, I thought there was a note that said these were not issued for construction. IFC is the, when plans are.
Oh, they're double sided.
Approved for construction, these are not approved for construction. They have that approved, yeah.
They've got a construction schedule right here.
That's just their idea.
My, my point is though, they're planning on July doing things, like, I think we're getting past the point of it being a conceptual plan that we can kick down a road.
They have presented the preliminary drawings, I think.
I believe that, that, that's these. These are the new drawings that were submitted last Wednesday. They have engineering documents, they have how they're gonna pave everything.
Unless there's changes made, it's pretty much going to be fine, it's gonna be. They have sections on every single thing you can think of, your curves, water, to the lines, and everything else.
Right.
Three-foot setback, or sixty-three foot?
Uh.
You mentioned something about it only has a three-foot setback.
From yard.
From the right of way.
From the right of way.
So he, what he's saying is there's sixty feet of right of way, you take that thirty feet off from the center of the road, go to the front of the property, and then there's only three feet from there to the property, well, that, yeah.
So basically, the width of this table.
Yeah, that, that, this is from the right of way, which, that right of way, that's the part I'm confused on, because a right of way is for utilities, it's, in a private road, you, there, there isn't a right of way. I mean, I deal with variances all the time, that's, that's what we do, we put our poles in the right of way, we put our lines in the right of way. And if it's someone's private property, we have absolutely no right of way in private property, cuz it's private property. It's, it's, the right of ways usually run along all of the major roads, the county roads, but if it's a private road, not owned by the city of Memphis, then I don't know how there would be a right of way there. That's the part I'm confused on.
We're talking about state roads and secondary roads.
Even the city of Memphis roads, there, there's a right of way on those roads.
Now, that they own the road, that's where our regulations.
Yeah, there's, there's right of ways even on those, on the side streets, there's right of ways, but the city of Memphis has a right of way to put their sewer drains in and ditches, whatever, so if it's, once it turns to private though, now, now this, this area here is, no matter if they put in, again, I'm just speaking from what I do at work, and I'm not saying how it applies here. But this is all private, I mean, they could have built a Myers here, or they could have built condos here. But when you go in a Myers parking lot, you know, there's a right of way there, it's not, you can't, you can't do whatever.
I mean, we're dedicated.
It's like if you get in an accident on a Myers parking lot, who do you call? You call police, but they're gonna say, hey, it's private property. That's the same thing this is, this is a condo, this is an association, this is, I'm assuming probably if there's condos, it's gonna be, like you said, enjoyed, it's gonna, association is gonna pay for this to be plowed, it's gonna pay for the grass to get cut. And that's why, I know what you're saying about a three-foot, but I don't necessarily know what there is if that applies to this, cuz it really doesn't make any sense.
I'm not saying it makes sense, but that's.
I know what you're saying, that's in the rules.
And that's, and we need to be looking at this and going, hey, what, you know, and, and Tommy pointed out earlier that, you know, this code was written, you know, seventy-eight, and that's a hundred percent true, but they, it's either our law or it's not. And we don't get to nitpick what.
But I'm, I understand where Steve's coming from, like, I get it, but we need to figure this out, like, now. Cuz like you said, they wanna start in July, I, I think for the, the betterment of the community, this is something that the community wants overall, a whole, it's gonna help generate, it's gonna help bring our downtown better. So we gotta figure out, if the problem is that they're not following the ordinances as they're written, then do we give them a variance, or I should say, do they ask for a variance, maybe it's granted? Or do we just bring this attention to the city council like you guys are doing? You provided the document, Steve provided the document, maybe they said, go and speak to your concerns, and then they can decide. They either ask us for more information, where we can dig into it deeper, or they can tell the builder, hey, this is okay, but you're gonna have to ask for a variance for these things you pointed out.
That stuff's supposed to come from us, council doesn't look at this again until the final review. I mean, we, we are.
Well, you did it, you already did it, you did it, yeah, right, you've already done it, here it is.
Right, I'm just, I'm sorry, I don't, we wouldn't be giving this information to the contractors of, hey, you need variance.
Is there anything in the code book that discusses private roads?
Yes, I, I, I don't remember where I found a definition.
No, if you read it, I'll find it, but if it's in there, I'll get it, but does it differentiate any type of setbacks, clearances, whatever you wanna call it, right of way, for private roads as opposed to the public roads?
I, here, I'll, I'll find it real quick.
Cuz I'm thinking if there's nothing in there that says private roads are subject to the same setbacks, variance, and right of way.
Correct.
As the other road, then we're just kinda wasting time on here because, if, like you said, it is a private road, if that's for sure it's a private road, then we can't go by any other.
All, all streets and their contents shall be installed by the developer and remain the private ownership of the condominium association or its legal, uh, legal equivalent, except for public sewer and or public water lines and their, uh, apparatuses?
Apparatus.
Apparatuses, which shall be conveyed and or dedicated to the public if the city deems those actions to be in the best interest of the public. All streets shall be located within the appropriate street of, uh, street right of way as set forth in one fifty, one three, uh, one-one-three B-one, and have pavement widths as set forth in one fifty, one-one-three B-two, and shall be located as to provide access to all common areas. So that part says it's gonna have them, all streets are gonna have the right of ways.
I didn't read that, right?
You're saying they just have to have the appropriate right of way?
They're, they're saying that, that has, they're, they have to be built in the same way as the other streets. They, that's, that's how I read, I mean.
More or less, it's saying that you can't throw a dirt road down there.
Yeah, they have, you have to comply with the general rules of the, that's how I read it. If you read it, that's how I interpreted it, but maybe I interpreted it wrong.
All shall be located within the appropriate street right of way as set forth in blah blah blah, and have the pavement widths as set forth in blah blah blah.
To what's their pavement width?
Pavement width of fifty-two feet we talked about, which is out, which is silly, it's outrageous, but that's, that's what our code says.
And why, why don't that, that was a typo?
Um, it probably was a typo, for sure.
Fifty-two.
But that being, that being said, um, streets, uh, street parking shall only be allowed in areas designed specifically to accommodate vehicle parking and approved by city council during the site plan approval. All public and private streets shall be constructed to accommodate vehicle parking on at least one side as shown in the site pan, site plan, and approved by city council. So for normal widths, road widths are twenty-four, plus eight for the normal width of a car, we're still looking at thirty-two feet, not twenty-five as proposed.
If there's gonna be parking in this road.
All streets, public, all public and private streets shall be constructed to accommodate vehicle parking on at least one side.
Oh, man, the whole city's violation. Oh, you understand what they're building it.
I mean, that's, that doesn't apply to the whole city though, cuz this is strictly governing the condo, the condominiums.
So our, our action then is that we're moving forward with this, going to council to ask, but you're saying that it isn't up to council?
We are supposed to complete the preliminary review process.
And, but don't you think you did that with the information that you get and the information that Steve did? Sounds like that's already been done.
I mean, this is gonna sound annoying, I reviewed like two of the ten sections. There's a lot more of our code of ordinances that governs this, like, street lighting. Like, I don't think they have street lighting anywhere on these maps, I didn't talk about that. Um, there's, uh, if you look at like buildings seven and six, there's, I feel like there should be a crosswalk there between those two buildings, otherwise the only way to get to the inner circle is between buildings twelve and eleven. Like, there's just a lot of things we could look at and review of this, and I know it's going to be annoying and frustrating, but I just feel like we aren't doing that.
Here's a set of detached condos of where I used to live.
And I, I mean, I'm not saying.
That's a HOA.
Right.
Now, do you think that they violated their variances?
I mean, I don't know what their ordinances are, that's so.
This is German, that's still what they're setback.
They probably have very different.
This is it.
Right.
That little plateline, and look how many detached condos are on there.
I mean, that looks like they have ten feet side, on each side, right? That seems.
You can spit on a neighbor's window.
Yeah, yeah.
There is just enough between these, between these, uh, condos for utilities, that's it.
Right, and I, I think, I don't think our ordinance is.
They don't think that street's either, I don't think that street either is sixty, oh, sixty feet either, so, this is, I mean, they got a variance from the city to build these.
It, it comes down to, our code of ordinance says one thing, and we need to adequately inform them of what it says, and they can seek a variance for it, there's, there's nothing wrong with that, but I, I don't know. I just don't know, I guess.
But again, for point, you know, you're pointing out.
I mean, yeah, we're not pulling it off at all.
These setbacks and all, all the dimensions, the stuff don't match the code book, we could say, hey, council, look, you know, you gotta just print, the setbacks and everything else does not match our code book, what do you wanna do?
Right, if, if they.
There's not a problem with asking for it, they can ask for variance, and goes zoning, and zoning approves the variance, and we move on from there.
What's the difference between a private street and maybe a private driveway, they call it a driveway? If that looks like a driveway right there, it's everybody's driveway, it's not a street.
That's a, and that's.
You know, and that's, that might be how they get around it, but.
Correct.
Good point.
Depends on how you label it, and if it's the city wants to say, okay, a twenty-five foot street's okay. And that's, they can change whatever they have to do, grant a variance. I think all your work points out all the issues that we have, and stuff to city council, say, how do you wanna do with it?
Here's the other HOA, right here, which is similar to this one.
Good lord, that's close, I couldn't stand it.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
When I moved in there, none of this was here, and none of this was here. That's my, that's my daughter's elementary school, and there's a seven, the only reason why they didn't build there, oh, come on, away, is because there's two cemeteries. They literally built right up to the back of the cemetery. This road, that's the cemetery fence right there.
You start showing old movies on Home Depot.
No, 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 but this is all that, another condo association, and they squeezed as much as they could in there.
So I, I guess I'm just trying to look for the, like I said, the.
They asked for variance.
The resolution, the resolution is, here's a problem, you did a good job pointing them out, it goes to, we, we attach yours along with Steve's.
To city council.
Tell them we identified these issues, and you said you've only addressed so many so far.
If you look at it, and I cite everything that wasn't looked at.
And, and we, then at that point, we can start making some headway, cuz I think like the.
It seems like it's time, it's time to pass this on to council.
Absolutely.
Steve's idea, to pass it on to council, and this is what we, what we came up with, and we're done.
I, I get, I get that some of this is done, but I disagree that it's been fully evaluated, and I know that's annoying to hear.
Well.
But moving in on a council and with our, with, with, um.
Major concerns.
Major concerns that you have, or the, or the commission has. Um, where if they need to make modifications, they can request a variance to the ordinance uh, through the zoning, through the zoning board, and once those variances have been accepted, and then we have our final site.
Like, there's lighting, sidewalks, those other issues that can be addressed as.
Correct.
As construction progresses.
As construction progresses, it happens all the time. As construction progresses, it happens all the time. Like I said, John's busy building, uh, Mr. Jarvis has, has been in real estate, so there's always been, you're always gonna have variances, you're always gonna have changes. And even my job, what I do, I don't have all the necessary tools, and when I get there, I can only get so far in the job. Now I, a customer or a client makes a change, now I have to request a change order and get approval through what we already did, and we deal with fire marshals, we deal with, uh, building inspectors, code enforcement officers. There, there, there's a lot in tail.
Yeah, I like your point about street lighting too, that's a pretty good point.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah.
It's a safety concern too.
Basically, yes. I don't like walking down narrow streets. Also don't like street lights in my window.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, what exactly are we doing?
Moving it to city council for review. I think the city council will be able to bill it to review any of the issues they can-
You did, like you said-
Or, or apply for the variance.
Yeah, you're, you, you did state these other things haven't been looked at, but this gives them a starting point.
I mean, we're supposed to complete the review process though, I don't understand. I don't understand why, why we're passing off.
Their major concern for most of their building are their setbacks, that's your, right, and the height. They need that information before they can go any further, so. Those are the first two things that we're gonna, that we have to tell city councils, if they can talk to the builder-
So they'll all deal with it, because it can't do anything.
Yeah.
So we're not gonna have a preliminary review meeting? I'm, I'm, I don't understand.
Well, what is it that we gotta review further? Uh, I don't understand that, we've been sitting here for an hour and a half so far, beating this topic to death, and I don't know, you keep saying we need to review something, do you have something ready to review? I mean, do you wanna go up there right now and then say, top of number one, here it is? Put it on the screen, whatever, we can review it, I mean, but how much time do we need to do the review that you're planning? Do we need three or four hours, or do we need a half hour?
I'm, I'm just saying that the code, the code ordinance calls for a preliminary review in which the public is, you know, pressing, you know-
Format is that review, I mean, what, how do you see this review happening? Because we're talking about it, and let's get off to the center of this. Let's, let's have the review, if we require, if you have a lot of information that you see that needs to review, structure it, let's get it ready, let's have another meeting this month if we need to, and sit down for an hour or two and hash it out. Um, it, it doesn't seem like we're prepared for the in-depth review that you wanna have.
I, I'm saying that the in-depth review would be held on May eighth, the ci- like, the citizens of the adjoining properties would be notified, and this is a requirement of our code ordinance.
Who puts that together, Josh?
We are, yeah, we-
I mean, we have to put notice out to the public?
I notified them, but we were required to put out the public, I've noticed today.
Okay, so on May eighth, we're gonna have, the public's gonna be invited to come and review this and speak their concerns.
Yes.
And at that point-
That point would be the end of the preliminary review, considering they submitted this last week. We would then give them a list of all of our concerns, um, at which point they would take those concerns, um, either get variances, change their, um, change their drawings, but it's-
Well, we, you're, you're saying concerns. If, there's a, a concern issue, so the issue is that it doesn't meet ordinance and the actual impact concern, what does it impact the community? So we need to know that. Right? And then we need to know what are the possible solutions, because you gotta be aware, when we bring in, and we notify all the public, they're coming in for this review, rolling up a can of worms. You think this is a mess right now? It's, you're gonna have all kinds, you're gonna have all kinds of opinions coming in, and there should be stuff flying everywhere.
And I, and I think that isn't, that is a part of, part of this business there.
We need to plan this out, we need to understand how this meeting's gonna go, we need to list, here's what's not meeting the ordinance, and here's the impact again. And then the possible solutions are this, whether it be a variance, are we declining because it's gonna cause an issue for people in the community that they can't, uh, see past the building or whatever it is, it's gonna cause a health problem. But we need to have valid concerns, um, and also present what the solutions are, so that everybody that comes in, it's not just chaos, we're giving them direction, and here's the solutions. We're gonna give a variance for this, or we're gonna tell them, no, they need to modify it like this or that or whatever, we need to have that so that it flows smoothly and we can get in and out of there. Cause if we don't have that, it's gonna be chaos, we're gonna walk away with no resolution again, and we're gonna be revisiting this again. Right?
And we need to move.
We need to move on this, yeah, this, this stuff's all gotta get off the dead center, so. I'm taking your voluntary, can you put that together?
God, no.
Okay, wow, because if we're gonna-
It'll be forty-five pages and no one will read it.
No, I don't think it has to be, yeah.
That's where, it's, I mean-
Yeah.
Cliff notes, and then, and then we can-
Right. Uh, everything though, that I would type out, is just, is in here.
Okay, I got, did you, have you, I mean, it's kinda insensitive, but I, did you listen to the, uh, report on the news in regards to, uh, was it Kirk or Mur or whatever? The, uh, the person they interviewed, uh, the president in regards to, oh, the documents was four hundred and fifty pages long. And they just did the, the review on it yesterday, and it took five hours for them to review it. But they just, on both sides, touched on bullet points in regards to the most important items. That's what they mean is, you know, this is great, but something the reference suspects, say, okay, bullet point on this, let's refer to page three of the documentation that I gave you.
Yeah.
And then you subscript it down, and then instead of reading the entire, this is good for a referential journal, to go back on, but you can bullet point saying, go to page three, paragraph two, line A, and then we can go down that, and that's where you make it down. So this is what I have a concern on here, here's why. And that way, with everybody that's here in the community, when we get that far, they have the confidence, and they say, okay, I understand what he's saying, I get where he's coming from on this. Yay, nay, maybe, understand? And when you talk about setbacks and stuff, and you're, you've got people there that don't understand all the- Terminology. Language, right, you need to be able to have visuals, so you're gonna need to have a picture of the whole property, and where the buildings are, and you start talking about the setbacks, this building doesn't need a setback. It's, should be this, but they've got it at this, and show where it is and the impact. So that people can visually see it, because if we just start talking about, say, oh, well, the setback's off by three feet, the viewers, oh, three feet, that's not enough, right? Right, it's the same as- It's on the front door, it's like three feet from the road, but that's not true. You know, everybody's gonna have their own interpretation, so this has to be very clear. Precise to the point, and everything needs to be, because the meeting is gonna go, and they wanna see it, they wanna hear it, and they wanna get right to the point we done. And no matter how good we- No, no, how good we presented, it's gonna all, you're right, right, it, it happens everywhere, it's, it's not just here. And there's, there's nothing on you on it.
You still got that, uh, was that the other building? Your, uh, map?
Map in a flip turn? Yeah, it's a map building.
Yeah, the layout, the prints.
Yeah, yeah.
That'd be the easiest way to explain it, unless you can put it up on the projector like this.
I can do the projector, it just has to be scanned, I think, is it in?
Uh, there's digital copies of this plan, uh, I could put the PDF of whatever I typed up in there.
I think that's probably how, instead of getting so deep, you bring that up and then talk about the points, point them out. Kind of the same way that you did Steve.
Right.
But even a last, you know, we, I don't wanna say dumb it down, but just, here's, there's, there's some violations here that were, there were ordinance that were concerned about, where the, the public's here, they can voice theirs, they might have completely different concerns.
Right.
But we can point them out and see what they are, they might wanna know about sidewalk or streetlights or those things, and we can address those at that time.
Correct.
We might not have the answers on it, but we can at least get feedback. Then we fulfill, by doing that, right, we fulfill our obligation?
By having a meeting with the, the public that they were notified about, yes, we fulfill-
And who knows, we might get a lot of people here, we might not get that many people here.
I get the people around them, where the condos are going in and-
Well, he said we have to notify every company, right?
We had the last meeting, when they, when they, when we reached, when they asked for the rezoning in the first place, we had the community here, and they said, well, what about all the trucks? What about all the dirt that's coming out of there, what are you going to do? We're gonna work on getting a splash tub or something before the trucks come out. It doesn't even, you don't have all the rocks and everything. You know, so they'll come up with a resolution, we come up with a, if we question it, you have to have, you can't have a resolution unless you have a problem. If you have a problem, then there's a way that you can come to-
Now, during that meeting, does the, does the builder required to be here too, or he is not, not required to be here?
I would imagine they should be.
I would imagine, I mean, we're gonna o- offer it up to them, but I just didn't know if they would-
I mean, at the very end of the-
They certainly should have gone with you.
Yeah, I know, at the very end, we would present whatever our findings, our arguments, you know, to, for, you know, total clarity.
Since we went way off track, um, that's I don't, there's no way we're gonna review the master plan then. So-
Talking about kicking it down the road.
Have I kicked this thing in? What, what was it, Wales Township said it took down, that, um, they kicked it down the road for quite some time. But I don't wanna do that, I mean-
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm just at top there, you know, there's a lot of things that are in the works that, with all that master plan, plan being complete, looking for money from the state, looking for improvements, maybe the building, or, or all that stuff.
We can get right-
We should be done and complete this thing. May I just make two brief suggestions here? I don't wanna, I'm not gonna get any detail, but I think, if you're gonna, if you're gonna take this, that's fine, it's, you know, the prior. But exactly, you know, we come back, two, three, do the master plan? I'd like to know what portions are complete.
Right.
Where do I have to get going?
I'm gonna go through my paper, cause I know you have, you have, this is on your papers.
What are the priorities for the next items to be completed? So if we could see what we've actually completed, and then what's the next part we're going to tackle?
It's gotta be, it was about-
That, that, that's been completely popped on the side, I don't think-
I understand.
We just can't keep-
We can't keep pushing it off, we do it-
It's not that, it's, it's gonna be very important, that we're gonna be trying to get state or federal or county funding from our senator or our colleague.
I got you.
We need to show that we have our, our stuff all together, you know? We have our portion plan, we have the things that we wanna do, and this is the way that we're gonna do it, which is all part of that master plan. And it seems like this just keeps getting pushed off over time.
It does.
And again, you know, I have this four page, I wrote, I'm, what, it's gonna be four months? How long does it take, you guys say, what, do you like it or not, or you wanna?
I like it, tell them, I, I mean, I'm good on it.
Well, okay, that's still not resolved, that's four months.
Okay.
You know, I, I did my own work right away, I don't know-
You had done.
Both of these say, we can just say, yeah, that's fine, that looks good.
Do we have the name here?
We, we reviewed them, I was, said it was, that was before Christmas, I think.
It was. We pushed it off.
We've been off track, it's a long, I don't know, I'm, I'm, is there, is there any concern? Can we re, and I know we're running long, but is there anybody we can resolve that today?
Sure.
Did anybody wanna change anything there? I, I don't recall us having any- If nobody wants to change anything, yes, but I'm not gonna speak for you if you had any concerns or want to edit it.
I mean, I had, I had no problems with it if the commission does, but the only thing I will say is we updated it from appraiser language, which that section was talking about, uh, the categorization of the land based on appraisal, and we were changing it to zoning, which, that's fine, if that's what we wanna do, that is a, that is a difference.
That's the only difference, I don't think.
Yeah, and then it was just the updated-
And then just the updated, yeah.
Can we vote on that?
I was okay with it, I didn't see any concerns with it, I liked the way it was written better, and it went eliminated.
And I'm sure we will read over all of these pages again if-
Absolutely. Well, then I make a motion to accept the, uh, the pages that, uh, Mr. Weaver has written, uh, with the updated terms, with the updated second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion.
So that's what we can put in the complete column?
Yes. Thank you.
We completed something.
Thank you, Steve. I like, I like your input on that.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, thank you, and then what, and then you just gotta update that in the master, in the-
Yeah, I can touch that up.
Type it all up, put it in there, and then we can move on to the next section.
If you can figure out what that section is. I said, but now we gotta figure out what section we have.
Yeah, I was sort of listening about, you know, what's, what's the next part we gotta go on?
Yeah.
Does anybody have any objections to meeting on the twenty-seventh? Meeting for, um, on Wednesday, on the twenty-seventh of this month?
We wanna do another meeting this month?
Doug, that's just strictly for the master plan, let's just get that through.
Just for the master plan?
Yeah, cause we feel like, like-
Not this month's levels?
No, master plan, we need to get moving on that, cause like Steve said, we keep kicking it down the road, and it isn't, the can's getting holes.
Are we increasing the frequency of meetings to just twice a month, the second meeting of the month, only discussing the-
Only to discuss master plan, that's all it's gonna be for, cause we really need to get moving on this, it's from two thousand and fifteen. And I said, we've been sitting on this now for four months, and I think the last time we reviewed it was the paperwork that Steve wrote in there, I mean, you can, I mean, just, you can just see up on the board, I mean, when the last time we were actually working on it.
Either that or for the, for the April meeting, um, make that number one on the list.
The master plan, I have not, I don't have a problem with that.
That's a good call, let's get a half hour, forty minutes of the master plan done, and then move on to the-
Move on to the rest of the agenda, absolutely.
Yeah, well, I can, I, I think I can, I can come on with myself, but-
Yeah, go ahead, check on it.
For the April meeting, we could just make that-
Make that priority one.
Number one.
Yeah, and start working on this master plan.
Number two and number three, so-
We get sidetracked.
Make it number one.
It's all important stuff, though.
Absolutely, it's all important. We all knew what we were coming into, and now it's all coming to an end.
So our next meeting's April tenth, or?
Uh, we're doing March twenty-seventh, the same time.
We are doing March twenty-seventh, so?
We're gonna do March twenty-seventh to start work, or, I mean, is that okay with everybody? And I will do an April meeting?
I think we need to.
We need to, so make, March twenty-seventh, six-thirty.
All right.
Uh, that's strictly for master plan, and then our standard meeting on April tenth at six-thirty. Uh, where first order of business is the master plan, and then we'll move on to, uh, the rest of the, um, the rest of the, uh, the other business. Cause we need to, we need to get moving on all of it. We've sat on that too long. I mean, everybody's getting anxious here on this, I mean, I'm waiting for my new vehicle that they said is gonna be here soon. So, same thing, my company's sitting.
Yeah.
Uh, any other comments from commissioners?
No.
All right, so-
Do we need the motion to incre- increase the meeting schedule? Probably, yeah.
All right, so I make a motion to increase it to twice a month.
We can just do it as needed.
Yeah, or as needed, okay, that part, okay, make a motion as needed to-
I don't, I'd rather not do that, I don't, it's quite not be necessary.
Yeah, just, just for this month, I think we can do it. Yeah, just for, yeah, I just wanna, yeah.
So totally mind on the master.
So we want a motion, a motion to have an extra meeting on the twenty, twenty-second.
That meeting will be strictly just to focus on- Strictly on the master plan, too.
And then moving forward, we'll make the master plan, by the time this can be completed.
If we add some ads on it. Right, we need to, we need to re, we need to re-center and redirect, that's what we need to do.
So I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Oh, I thought, I thought you made a motion-
I made the motion, please second that, okay, for this month's meeting. I didn't hear that. Okay, any opposed? All right, so, motion carries. All right, any other comments from anybody else? If not, I make a motion to adjourn this meeting, second.
Third.
And it would be, um, third, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, meeting adjourned, it's two P M.